Five clap Jim, come on.
I was getting my guests to make sure they were quiet. So Mayor, it is 5:00 PM, ready to start the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. I'd like to welcome everybody to our October 7th council meeting. If we could please rise for the flag salute. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God,
indivisible, infinite, justiciable. You could remain standing while Deputy Mayor Buu leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that you would challenge each of us to reach higher and farther to be the best we can be. Thank you for watching over our great community and keeping us safe in these unsettled times. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Lynn, can you read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement?
This is to advise the meeting notices covering this meeting have been set and posted as required under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Lynn. We have approval of September 16th council meeting minutes. We have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
DeLucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yep. Right click or something, or left click one.
I don't have a left click.
Kane?
He answered, Emmett Bledover, he said yes.
All right. Riordan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need approval of payroll requisition list and operating expenses. We have a motion in second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
Buu?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane? Riordan?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have a presentation from Atlantic City Electric on the South End Substation and Power Lines. So I'll turn it over to them.
Mayor, thank you. Before we get started, Emmett, please stop unmuting yourself. Your background noise is bleeding everybody out. So I'm going to turn it over to Ken Moska from Atlantic City Electric. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation to be here this evening. As Jimmy said, I am Ken Moska, Public Affairs Manager for Langs Electric. To my left, Chris Kennedy, he's our project manager, and we're going to review and update where we are in our project. Chris is going to start out.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. Just wanted to give you an update on the Harbor Beach project. We're happy to announce that we were finally able to award this project to Jengoli Power Associates. And they have actually the entire bundle of projects, which is our transmission overhead portion, as well as our substation portion. So it was a little delayed in awarding this project. So you'll see us probably in the next couple of weeks start to mobilize. But our actual construction start date will probably be pushed out into the end of October, beginning of November timeframe. So now that they're on board, we're trying to finalize a schedule with them. So we'll be sharing that with you guys as soon as we have it in hand. Some things for you to look at. Once the construction begins, you'll see activity at the substation itself. You'll also see activity right there on Bay Shore Drive. So there will be some construction that begins right there. You'll also see it on that Atlantic Brigantine Boulevard. I know there's been a lot of conversation about de-watering along Atlantic Brigantine Boulevard. As you and Atlantic County work that out, we'll obviously go with, you know, whatever direction you point us in. We understand that's a very fluid situation right now, but. We also, I also wanted to touch on a couple of major milestones that you'll be able to see as construction starts. The beginning of the substation building that we're building, that will be completed. Outside of that, we'll be complete and ready to accept the GIS system. The new transformation. Beginning of April to the end of April. Can you hold on for a second?
Sure.
We're trying to get in. Oh, me?
What am I doing wrong?
All right.
So you want me to mute myself?
All right, I removed the offending person from the meeting. I'm going to turn it back over to Chris.
All right, thank you. So you'll see some of that major activity begin. As we discussed during the planning meeting, the work along that Atlantic City or Atlantic Brigantine Boulevard, that'll take place during the off-season. So you won't see any construction out there during the summer, like we had already discussed. The substation itself, that building will be in place before the summer begins. Any activity that goes on there, construction will continue there, but all of that construction will be inside for the most part. And we, you know, like we had discussed before, we're on schedule to finish up by the, to switch over your entire load May of 2022. If anybody has any questions for me, you can certainly ask them at this point.
I just said one question. I guess with the work you're doing on the substation, new power lines, what kind of impact will that have on reducing power outages Brigantine?
Yeah, you can, yeah, sure. Well, Vince, it'll help us a great deal. That's why we're doing this project. We have two new lines coming into Brigantine. Eventually, we are going to decommission the Brigantine sub across the street here. So we will have more than enough energy to keep Brigantine operating in a clean and safe manner when it comes to use of electric. We're not storm forecasters. When certain type, when certain type of storms come in, you know, you could lose service depending on the type of storm, but it's going to have to be a real bad one. What we're building here in Brigantine is, it's state of the art. This is going to be not only a beautiful building, but the service that it will provide Brigantine will be outstanding. So it is our plan, our hope, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that a great number of outages that could normally occur, you know, through lesser means, will occur a lot less often. But again, the larger storms, you know, we're not, you know, we're not in the business of forecasting storms, but we feel really good about this project for Brigantine.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, it's understanding with some of the larger storms, we would lose power. There's some things you can't control. I know, but some of the issues we've had here in the community was, I guess, with the infrastructure, as it was aging, there were some situations where people were without power for a while. And I guess our understanding is with the upgrades and modifications you're making, it'll help resolve some of those problems. We want to thank you for that.
Well, thanks Vince, but it'll eradicate a lot of that, Vince, a lot of it.
Thank you. I don't know if there's any other questions from council or any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. I was just wondering, can we expect intermittent outages while you're connecting and reconnecting during this two-year period?
No, we've, thank you for the question. It's a great point. We've actually scheduled the construction piece with those transmission lines coming from Atlantic City to make it so there wouldn't be no intermittent outages. Yeah, the only, I don't even believe there will be an outage at all at the end, but the only chance for an outage would be in that May 2022 timeframe, when we cut you over from the old substation to the new substation. But I believe we're working on a plan to do that in a way that doesn't cause any interruption at all.
At all, correct, yep.
Oh, perfect. Any other questions from council?
I just want to say, I want to thank Ken and your crew there for your constant updates throughout the whole procedure. I know you've been, we've had meetings at the community center and you've invited people, the public, to come over and see what's going on with excellent displays and all. And so I just want to say thanks, and I know it's going to be great when it's all done. And that's it. And if people have questions out there, please feel free to reach out to any one of us and we'll either get the answer to your questions or whatever we can do, we're glad to help. Thanks.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. People know how to get ahold of me. Somehow my cell number is out all over the place and that's fine. Jimmy knows how to get ahold of me. This is a really, really great project. Sorry if I'm being redundant, but it's a great project. We're really happy about it. We believe you, as the leaders of Brigantine, will be happy about this. Our customers, your residents here in Brigantine, will be happy about this. And we'll have weekly project meetings here in Brigantine. So you'll be able to find us. We're not going to be far away. And I'll be spending a lot of, you know, to Jimmy's consternation, I'll be spending a lot of time here in Brigantine.
I know there was a lot of concerns about the initially, the big poles that were going to be coming down Brigantine Boulevard. And it was so great to hear that when you redesigned the plan to go with the underground cables, I know past Mayor Simpson, God rest his soul, was very instrumental in that. And just, I want people to know that also. No big poles in Brigantine.
Thank you for saying that. We were speaking about that very same subject prior to the meeting kicking off. You know, it just felt strange coming over the bridge, you know, knowing that Andy was not here. He worked very hard. I have to tell you, he worked very hard for Brigantine, but when it came to this project, for as friendly as Andy and I were, he held my feet to the fire when it came to information, when it came to what was best for the people of Brigantine. He was adamant about what he wanted and was a good man who loved Brigantine.
Absolutely.
I just have one question. When you're working on the Boulevard, Atlantic Brigantine Boulevard, will there be down to one lane? I assume it'll be down to one lane with police presence there?
It will be. There'll be one lane in each direction because as you know, we're going down the center median. And Jimmy, I don't know if you want to talk about when we're done with the stamped concrete and all that, but another thing that Andy and you fought for. But yeah, there'll be great traffic control. We're working that out with Jimmy, the city of Brigantine and the county of Atlantic. It'll be very safe there, but it will be one lane in each direction in the off-season only. We're not going to be closing any lanes during the season.
Excellent. So our citizens just have to know that, you know, there might be slight delays, might just slow up a little bit, but it's all worth it in the end. Thank you very much.
And there's signage, there's signage that Jimmy asked us to put out, signage that the county requires to put out, you know, about construction and things like that. So it'll be well-signed, well-lit, and we will take every safety precaution possible.
Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to note too is, because I know Councilman Riordan talked about this earlier, about the public meetings, but also in the very beginning of the project, I want to actually really thank you guys. I know you went door-to-door in the neighborhoods where this project was going, talked to residents, talked to people, left door knockers, and really made yourselves available. And I think it really put everybody in the position, one, to feel comfortable with the project, and two, to know what was going on. So thank you. I know this was a two-year process, just notifying and communicating with the city. So thank you.
Okay, and Vince, really appreciate that because that, again, was in the Simpson request. So I went door-to-door with our, with our director and vice president, Susan Cohn. You know, Andy made it clear about what he expected when it came to outreach and who he expected to have the outreach completed. Again, God bless him for his nice and respectful, always was, always was to me. He wanted somebody above me to be knocking on doors. And so we're out here doing that. And Vince, thanks for, thanks for remembering that.
Absolutely. All right, perfect. If there's no other council comments, Ken and Chris, I'd really like to thank you guys for coming out today and taking the time to give us this last update. We're looking forward to moving forward with the project. So thank you, guys.
No problem. We appreciate the invitation, Vince. We'll be providing updates as we go along. I'm told it's going to be through you, Jimmy, that will provide updates to you. And then anything coming from the city would come through me and we'll make sure that we handle everything as quickly as possible.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for the garden club. And before we do the proclamation, I think it's very impressive that the garden club's been in existence for over 40 years now. So we're celebrating our 40th anniversary. And one, I just, on behalf of council, I'd like to personally thank all of the garden club members for all of their hard work and dedication into beautifying our city. And one of the things I think is really cool is the garden club awards. I know people get really, really competitive over those and getting those. And I know it's a huge effort that the garden club members literally drive up and down every street in Brigantine and try to look at, you know, the different properties and encourage people to really beautify their properties. And I know people proudly display those awards. I want to thank the garden club for all of that hard work and it's truly impressive. So for our proclamation, we have, whereas the Brigantine Garden Club is celebrating their 40th year promoting beautification, conservation, and education through the love of gardening, whereas, excuse me, whereas the club's army of volunteers nurture and maintain community gardens and encourage the participation and involvement of businesses and residents alike through awards and remembrance programs. Whereas the accomplishments serve as a source of great pride to the city and a source of enjoyment for all its visitors. Whereas the garden club is now an official and vibrant committee of the city promoting progress for the future by continuing to work towards excellence. Now therefore, I, Vince Riordan, Mayor of the City of Brigantine, on behalf of city council and the people of the city of Brigantine, do hereby commend and recognize the Brigantine Garden Club and extend our appreciation to its enthusiastic and dedicated volunteers who strive so diligently to make a useful and beautiful difference in our community. So congratulations to our garden club. Give you guys a nice round of applause. I know we'll be getting together soon to take a picture and make it official and hand it over, but we wanted to make sure we did the proclamation here at the city at the council meeting so we could get it out to as many people. I'll open it up if any council members would like to make any comments.
It's a lot of, lot of hard work. Those men and women are out there all summer long with the mosquitoes and the greenheads and the heat and the humidity, and it just makes our island look spectacular. Thank you for all of your work. Thank you very much.
And I would echo what Karen said, and it's a delight to be able to drive around the island and see the sometimes astonishing displays that the people are able to put together and to maintain. And it really does do wonders for the visual environment in our town. So thank the garden club.
And thanks to Patricia for taking the lead of the garden club. Like Vince, the mayor said earlier, it's, people look forward to getting that certificate every year and it's, and we're so thankful for all of you, all the volunteers that help out. So congratulations for a wonderful job by the garden club, or as Patricia, as you would say, complimente bellissimo lavaro da parte del giardino club. How's that?
Is that Ukrainian, Mike? What was it?
It's Gaelic.
I'm impressed, Mike. It was good. Well, again, thank you. And actually, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to deviate from the agenda a little bit. I know we have to do garden club appointments. And I figure, well, a number of the members are on, we could do it now so they don't have to wait till the end of the meeting. We have, I guess, eight new members coming in. So first, for our outgoing members, thank you so much to the service to Brigantine. We really appreciate all that you've done. And to our new members, welcome. So I guess we'll need a motion in a second to nominate the following eight members. We have Dolores Perotti, I'm sorry if I said your name wrong, I apologize. Joanne Findley, Laurel Lee, Linda Montello, Joanne Milnes, Jackie Morley, Anne Phelps, and our council member will be Neil Kane. Can we have a motion in second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, Lynn, can we have?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Riordan?
First of all, I'd like to say thanks to Councilman Kane for stepping up to the garden club. I pass his house and I see the beautiful job he does there in front of his house. It looks wonderful and I know he'll be a great addition to the garden club. So thank you, Neil, and congratulations, and I vote yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, congratulations to all our new garden club members. At this time, I would like to open it up to public comment, and this is public comment on agenda items only. So if you'd like to speak on any agenda item, just signal to the city manager and he will recognize you.
Mayor Sarah, I don't see anybody trying to get my attention.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to close public comment. We have ordinance number 12 of 2020, which is a public hearing and adoption. And this is an ordinance providing a one-way street designation for portions of 11th Street South, and this is for the 300 block of 11th Street South. We have a motion in second?
I'll make that motion.
So move second.
All right, so can we, I guess, open it up for a public hearing? If anybody wishes to be heard on this issue, just signal to the city manager and he will recognize you.
Mayor, I see nobody trying to get my attention.
All right, so at this time, we're going to close public comment. Are there any council comments? All right, seeing none, I'd like to thank Councilman Latieri for his work on this. I know he put a lot of effort in moving this forward, so thank you. Lynn, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy? Amy?
Yes.
DeLucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Riordan? Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, ordinance number 13 of 2020, which is an introduction. And this is an ordinance of the city of Brigantine authorizing a private property sale of certain non-buildable properties to contiguous property owners pursuant to NJSA 40A 12-13B 5. We have a motion in second?
Second.
Second.
There, I guess, any council comments? All right, seeing none at this time, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Riordan?
Yes.
Sarah? Motion carried.
We have resolution 2020-175, and this is a resolution declaring that an emergent condition existed and authorizing an award of contract for storm damage. This is for the July storm where we had downed trees and debris. And this is for a purchase order that was issued to Health Fighters Tree Service of Ag Harper Township and a not-to-exceed amount of $14,000. We have a motion in second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Riordan?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I apologize, I did skip one. So we're going to do a resolution 2020-175, which is a ratification of the Brigantine White Collar Employment Association Agreement. We have a motion in second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Are there any council comments? All right, seeing none, just to give people some brief background, the White Collar Employment Association Agreement, this is newly bargained agreement where people have newly, I guess, unionized. We worked on this process and I'm going to thank Jim Bennett and our association leaders there who worked on that process to kind of bring everything together. Most of the stuff in the contract was standard language, and I know that Mrs. Phillips was here, she would ask. I know it was a 2% increase for those union members. So can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Tieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Riordan?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I apologize, I said that it was a new union, so I was a little bit mixed up. We were just clearing up language in existing contracts, so I do apologize. All right, next up, we have a resolution 2020-177, and this is a resolution declaring that an emergent condition exists and authorize an award of contract for equipment rental. And this has to do with the whale that washed up on the beach, and this was a purchase order issued to Mike Zindorf of Maze Landing in a not-to-exceed amount of $8,000. We have a motion in second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any council comments? All right, seeing none, I want to thank Public Works for their outstanding job in dealing with that whale. That was probably one of the most interesting phone calls I got, but knowing that our city manager and Public Works are on top of it, I felt very confident and comfortable that that was going to get taken care of appropriately. So can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Tieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Riordan?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We have resolution 2020-178, and this is an award of contract for lawn and field maintenance at various city locations. And this is a company we used in the past. I believe this is Lawn Doc. And this is a company we used in the past. I believe this is Lawn Doctor of Margate and Northfield. And can we have a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Aine?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 2020-179. And this is a resolution of the City of Brigantine authorizing a ward of bid for one striker power load system. The city advertised and accepted sealed bids on September 17th for a striker power load system. And the lowest responsible bidder was Bay Head Investments of Berlin, New Jersey, with their base bid amount of $48,573.24. Can we have a motion and second?
So I'll move. Second.
John, can you go over what a striker power load system is?
Yes, Mayor, that is for the fire department. That is the lift, the, excuse me, the stretch stretcher lift for the new ambulances. So that two men don't have to lift the stretcher into the fire department's ambulance. This automatically will lift and take care of all the heavy lifting.
Perfect. Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so we have Resolution 2020-180, Award of Contract for Improvement in Repairs for City, various city projects. Public Works solicited quotes from three vendors, and W.J. Gross, Inc., from Sewell, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. We have a motion and second?
So I'm a...
Second.
Any questions from or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Aine? Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 2020-181. And this is a work change order number two for stormwater pump stations at Hackney Jenkins and 34th Street. And this is actually a decrease in the amount of $43,024.84. We have a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Reason for the decrease, South Jersey Gas has work to do in the area. So since they're going to be doing work, Lafayette Utilities, who we're using right now, doesn't have to go back and pave those streets. So that is where the decrease comes from. Any questions and comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane? Sorry, did you say yes? I couldn't hear.
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 2020-182, which is a work change order number two. And this is stormwater pump stations at Hackney Jenkins and 34th Street. And this is a net increase of $4,500. We have a motion and second?
I'll move. Second.
The reason for the increase here is we're replacing some of the check valves that have gone bad over the years. So one of the things we want to do is make sure these stations work well. And if you, the check valves are what keep the water from coming back into the pump when the tides are high. So this is something we're working on to make sure that the pumps work efficiently. Is there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so Resolution 2020-183. And this is work change order number two. And this is for emergency generators at various city locations. And this is a net increase of $8,500. Have a motion and second?
So I'm a...
Second.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Aine?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have Resolution 2020-184. And this is professional service appointment of a municipal judge. Whereas the City of Brigantine wishes to engage the professional services of a municipal court judge, whereas a municipal court judge may serve in accordance with a professional service contract, which may be awarded without competitive bargaining pursuant to New Jersey law. Now, therefore, be it reasonable by the City Council of the City of Brigantine that Timothy P. McGuire, Attorney at Law of the State of New Jersey, be and is hereby appointed as a municipal court judge for the City of Brigantine for the term beginning January 1st, 2021, and lasting until December 31st, 2023, or until a successor is duly appointed, qualified, sworn, whichever is the latter. We have a motion and second?
So I'll move. Second.
Any questions or comments from council? For me personally, I just want to thank Tim McGuire for his great service to the community of Brigantine. Can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Tim does a great job, and yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 2020-185. This is the reappointment of Don Cattardi as municipal court administrator. We have a motion and second?
So I'll move.
Second.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Aine?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Don has done a great job over the years, and I'm very grateful for her service, so yes.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have Resolution 2020-186, which is a resolution of the City of Brigantine, County of Atlantic State, and New Jersey authorizing cancellation of certain taxes with delinquent and credit balances under $10. And this is for the tax years 2020 and 2021. We have a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Aine?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have Resolution 2020-187. The cancellation of real estate taxes for 100% permanently and totally disabled veterans. Can we have a motion and second?
I'll make that...
I'll move. Second.
Any questions or comments from council?
Yes, I'd like to say I'm very happy to vote yes on this motion for Mario and all the time and effort he puts in, and thank him for his service to our country.
Country.
Important. I think it's really great that we're able to do this for our veterans. And, you know, our veterans have done so much for our nation. And this is just such a great way to give back to people who really protect, you know, our freedoms and our rights here in this country. Can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
I second Mike's expressions here, here, and I vote yes.
DeLucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 2020-188, which is a special event permit refund. We have a motion and second?
So I'll move.
Second.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Aine?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have our Polar Bear Plunge Request and the Primal Surf Fall Surf SUP Tournament. We have a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
You?
Yes.
Latieri?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Bearden?
Yes.
Mayor Sarah?
I could tell you, Polar Bear Plunge is a great event for the City of Brigantine. It really brings people out, brings people together. But I think it's for a really great cause for the Fisher House. And my understanding is that the Brigantine Polar Bear Plunge, I think, is one of the top contributors in the state of New Jersey to the Fisher House. And I think it's very impressive on what all of our great volunteers do to help our veterans. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Motion carried.
We have a couple of board... We'd like to make. First, we need a, sorry, we're getting a feedback off of somebody, hearing myself twice. I'd like to make a motion to point, I'm sorry, I'd like to appoint Jay Ferrera as the fourth alternate to the planning board. Can we have a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And can we also have a motion and second to appoint Councilman Neil Kane to the Economic Development Committee?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Perfect. All right, so we have our council manager committee discussions. Jim, do you have anything for us?
No, Mayor, I do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's start off with Deputy Mayor Karen View.
All right. We have a vacancy on the golf course committee with one member moving off the island. I would like to replace him with Richard Herbin. Rich has been a Brigantine resident for almost 50 years and plays golf at the links many times a week. He also lives on the course, so he is very familiar with all the issues we face with errant golf balls. I'd like to, do I, do we need to do a resolution on that or take a vote?
I think we can do a voice resolution. So if you make the motion, then someone can second it.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to put Richard Herbin on the golf course committee.
I'd like to...
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, congratulations.
All right, and back to the golf course. I'd like to thank John Doring and all the groundskeepers. Due to all their hard work, we have four new trees along the 17th tee box that will help to guide golfers out toward the center of the fairway and away from the, hitting the houses on the left side, hopefully. The Links staff is very encouraged with the amount of golfers playing this fall. Many days have been a total sellout with all the great weather that we've been having. The course is in fabulous shape. And just let everybody know that the greens were airfied on Monday and Tuesday and should be filling in very, very quickly. So they will be back to their normal excellent condition. I believe this Friday, John Doring, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this Friday is our final yard dirt collection, which is a great benefit to all our gardeners on the island, home gardeners throughout the growing season. And our final fall market, or not final, our fall farmers' market will be held next Saturday, October 17th, at the Community School Parking Lot at Roosevelt and Sheridan Boulevard. The market will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with a special bewitching visit at 11 o'clock. All vendors, volunteers, and shoppers are welcome to come dressed for Halloween. Remember, face coverings are required, and social distancing is monitored as patrons are counted in and out at the one-way market. Only qualified service dogs are permitted. And please make sure to bring your own bags and water. And finally, we had a fabulous shredding event last week, sponsored by Clean Communities and Public Works. Thanks to John Doring again, and Joe Campitelli, and Jimmy Doring. And thanks to all their hard work, many residents brought their unwanted documents to be shredded. So many people did a lot of cleaning out during our COVID quarantine. And it was very obvious with looking at the line of cars lined up down Ocean Avenue several times. The island is quite a bit lighter since the event. Don told me today that four and a half tons of paper were shredded. At times, we had, like I said, had cars lined up down Ocean Avenue. And again, thanks to John and Jimmy Doring and Joe Campitelli. Have a great rest of your week, everybody, and see you hopefully at the market on the 17th.
Perfect. Karen, and I could tell you, we've talked about this before, but our farmers' market was literally ranked one of the top 10 farmers' markets in the nation. And I think it's really, really impressive, and it's good to see the farmers' market continue into the off-season. So thank you, and thank you for all our volunteers. And Rick, thank you for your efforts there as well. Let's go to second word, Councilman Valutieri.
Good evening. There's a lot of busyness down at this end of the island, 12th Street North especially. Keely Construction is pulling gas mains up 12th Street. I guess to feed things beyond this end of the island, along the bulkhead there. Some of the neighbors of 12th Street are asking me about the gaping holes that have been filled with asphalt and how long they'll have to live with those asphalt patches in their driveways and sidewalks. Do they have to wait till the end of construction? Or it'll be somebody coming along and making repairs and returning the driveways and sidewalks to their original condition? That's all I have.
Mayor, if you want, I can take that.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Well, this is going to work just like the other projects that have gone on. They will have restoration crews coming out after everything in that particular area is finished. So if somebody has asphalt in the driveway now, there's a good possibility it's going to be there for a few weeks or longer. And then they'll come in and they'll do their repairs. Then they'll come in and they'll do their repairs on the streets. Everything will get paved, and then they'll start doing the restoration work.
Yeah, the question was, it's a little odd, for some reason, on 12th Street, the mains seem to be under the sidewalks instead of along the curb line on some of the other streets where they've been marked. In this particular block, the 200 block into the 100 block, all the, all the holes that they are digging to pull the mains, the main tubing through are all on people's property, either their driveway, the sidewalks, and some multiple spots if they have a double-wide driveway.
Yeah, we ran into that in other places. Lafayette Boulevard, for example, by my parents' house, the 400 block, there's a stretch where the main is actually under the sidewalks. I don't know why that happened, and that's a question that Matt Doring could probably answer better. But when they initially laid them in, they were actually on the house side of the curb. So they had, they're a little messy in some areas like that.
Yeah, okay, well, they were just concerned how long they'd be living like that. But I, you know, I assured them, it's, you know, they'll all be repaired when the, when the job is over in that area. And that's all I have.
Perfect, thank you all. Let's go to our third ward, Councilman Dennis Haney.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to say is congratulations to Neil on his new assignment. The assignments never end, Neil. You've left the police department, and you're still getting assigned other duties. All right, so congrats on that. Secondly, Karen, that four and a half tons or so, that number you mentioned must be fairly accurate because my house actually rose up about almost two feet from that weight leaving the island. And I just got an email that I'm getting a rebate check from all my flood insurance. So kudos, we got to do that maybe three, four times a year. On a more serious note, everything's going well in the third ward. I'm in communication with a few of my constituents, and I've been in touch with Jimmy on a couple of things, and taking care of that, and all is good. And thank you, that's all I got. Everybody have a great evening and enjoy the fall weather.
Perfect, thank you, Dennis. Let's go to our fourth ward, Councilman Rick Delucree. You're muted, Rick.
It's going to be downhill now. I'm going to make a comment that may seem like a bit of a downer, but it's really not, which is? The news today was that unfortunately, COVID-19 cases have been on the increase in Pennsylvania, New Jersey. That's bad news. The good news is we do know that we can take steps. And I like to think of Brigantine, over these past many months, we've been taking steps to minimize the risk and have as normal an existence as we can. To that end, I'm just asking people, please, you know, continue to be smart, continue to be vigilant. And look at the consent agenda, we have two events, wonderful fall and winter events, the polar bear plunge and primal surf tournament, both of which have found a way to structure things and to make whatever modifications are needed to be able to go forward in something approximating normalcy. And I'm sure there'll be some folks from the polar bear crew that'll be talking about this during the public portion. So that's all I have. Please, let's be smart, continue to be smart, and be safe.
That's perfect, it's very good advice, Rick. And I was watching the news report this morning, and they're talking about how numbers in PA and Jersey are going up. And one of the big concerns, you know, especially from the governor, is as people become more and more relaxed, you're starting to see the numbers go up, and the urgency, you know, that we should have is just to make sure that we keep vigilant. One, to make sure we find ways to live our normal lives. But two, to make sure that we're taking reasonable precautions to keep ourselves, our families, and our communities safe. So Rick, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Let's go to our at-large councilmen. Let's start with Neil Kane.
Hey, folks, I just want to appreciate, I want to thank everybody for their warm welcome and stuff like that. I'm going to do the best I can. I've got a lot to learn, but I'm going to do the best I can, and I'll learn as much as I can as quickly as I can. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Neil. Let's go to Mike Riordan, Councilman Mike Riordan.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, let's see, first of all, I just want to say, economic development speaking wise, we have some big things coming down the road. I should have a lot more information in the next couple of months. So that's a real good thing. I talk about it every month. But besides that, I guess, you know, we're going to, this dredging is going to start in the Cove, at the Cove. So if you see some work going on there, they'll be making it deeper and easier for the bigger boats to get through at Safe Harbor. And as always, I want to thank our department heads and John Doring and stuff for that information. Talking about the water, everybody, I don't know if you know, but tomorrow, black sea bass season opens up. So you can catch 10 fish at 12 and a half inches until October 31st. And then, then, starting in November, you can catch 15 fish until the end of December. But other than that, this is a real important thing that I want to talk about. By now, most people have gotten their ballots, ballots in the mail, okay? So you just fill it out with black or blue ink, fill in the dots on the ballot for whoever you're voting for. And then there's a second envelope, and this is the only one you have to sign right here. It has an X and a big arrow. You sign there, fill out your name and address, sticking inside this next envelope that goes on the outside with the postage paid, okay? You don't have to sign the back. If someone's going to drop it off for you, they can sign it. But it's very important, there's a very good pamphlet that comes with it, with all the instructions and answers. And if anybody has questions, feel free to call me or anybody else will be happy to help you, inform you how to do it. And as you heard before, the drop box is at City Hall now, outside the side door, in between the Presbyterian Church and City Hall. There's a camera on there, it's being monitored 24 hours a day. It's bolted to the ground. They pick up the ballots every day. I understand yesterday's ballot, the box was, you know, overflowing with ballots. Nothing came out, of course. But that's the most important thing, is to get these ballots in as soon as possible now. Don't waste any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And that's really important, and it's something I actually want to touch on too. With this process right now, and you can put politics aside, you know, about how people feel about a vote by mail election, the most important thing we need to do now is try to make sure that we're able to move forward with the process. I know there was a number of people who had concerns about putting their ballots, their vote by mail ballots in the actual United States Post Office, whether or not it would make it there. I know that, you know, Lynn was able to work with the county and work with the Board of Elections to make sure that we had a secure drop box here in Brigantine. And I think it's important, you know, it's a good process. And a lot of people that we've talked to as council, and a lot of people who have read Lynn's articles in the newspaper, feel very confident and very safe. One of the big questions that has been asked to a lot of us is who picks up those ballots? Like, and people ask, what is the party of the person who picks it up? My understanding is from the county clerk's office that both a Republican and a Democrat ride together. They go to a number of the boxes that are all over the community, they each have a key. So they, it's almost like trying to start the nuclear codes here with the president. They each have a key, they put it in the same time, they turn it, they open it out, they take it together, and the ballots are watched by both sides. And this is something that was just put in place to make sure that people could feel confident and secure to know that their votes were going to be counted. Once the ballots make it to the county clerk's office, they're then registered as being received, and you can actually track that online, so you can make sure that your ballot makes it there, that your ballot was counted. For Brigantine, most of the ballots should have been received somewhere between Friday or Saturday of last week. If for some reason, if you're registered, an active registered voter in Brigantine, and you didn't receive your ballot, you can reach out to the county clerk's office, and I'll give you the number, it's 609-909-5839, and they could best help you with the process. A couple people asked if they could still vote at the polls. My understanding is the only way you can vote at the poll is if you have a documented disability, and there's a form that you have to show that's approved by the Board of Elections. If you don't have that form and you try to vote at the poll, you'll be directed to vote by provisional ballot. That provisional ballot will be counted, but towards the end of the election. And the governor has also, in order to kind of expedite things, has allowed absentee ballots, or I should say vote by mail ballots, to start being counted 10 days ahead of time. So this way, we can get a reasonable answer and try to certify the elections in a reasonable amount of time. So every effort from our, you know, local city office to the county, to the state, has been put in place to try to help this process move along. Most important thing people can do at home, don't let the ballot sit there. Vote it, either drop it in the mail, drop it in the drop box, and take action. Don't wait till the last minute. The longer everybody waits, the more it complicates the process. I know for myself, I dropped my ballot in our drop box today. The other thing I wanted to talk about is Halloween. I know a number of people have reached out to us about Halloween. A couple days ago, the governor gave an announcement, and he is leaving it up to individual families and individual communities to determine what's right. I know some communities have canceled their Halloween events. Our Brigantine Police Department put out an announcement earlier, and basically, our position's going to be, if you wish to participate in Halloween, then obviously, you can have your kids dress up, you can have them go out. If you do not wish to participate, that choice is yours. And our advice would be just to shut your front porch lights off and not to go out and participate. But again, going back to Councilman Delucree, what he said earlier is we need to make sure we're taking every possible precaution. Make sure you're wearing masks, make sure you're taking precautions. Some people have even talked about, like, washing and sanitizing candy. Just take steps to make sure that we don't take a great community event and get relaxed on it and up our COVID numbers. So make sure that you guys take the precautions and make the choices that are best for your family. I want to thank everybody. So with that being said, we're going to open it up to public comment. So if you'd like to comment anything right now, please signal to the city manager, and he will recognize you.
David and Shirley, go ahead.
I believe you're muted, Shirley.
Am I muted? Okay, wait a minute.
You're good now.
You're good.
Okay now? Okay. Thank you, Shirley Morgan, at 4800 Harbor Beach. First of all, thank you to everyone involved with the shredding. That's a big help, and every year, we really appreciate that. And we shouldn't take it for granted. It's wonderful that you do it, especially at a difficult time like this. Also, thank you for the, making the voting easier. We know that we have to vote by mail, and by putting it in front of City Hall, it makes you feel a lot more secure. I have one question. The polar bear plunge, which brings on thousands of people. How are they going to handle that this year?
So my understanding is that the committee is going to put together social distancing guidelines and then come back and meet with council to talk about how they're going to put that together. So we're still waiting to hear the plan. So initially, we want to give them the approval, but it is pending the guidelines and what they put in place to keep people safe.
Yeah, I don't mean to put a damper, a real damper on it, because I think it's wonderful. But I also think that there are so many people involved that that might be very difficult at this time. But I know that you'll do the best you can, you always have done the best you can, Vince. And we thank you very much for that.
And Shirley, I could add that I've talked to members of the, you know, committee, and they've already stated that we have a really wide beach that goes on, and people can spread it out, we can spread out on the beach. Everybody doesn't need to be in front of the hotel, so I know that's one thing they're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
God bless.
Thank you. Stick with my nose just thinking about it.
Hey, Mayor, I don't see anybody else trying to get my attention.
All right, so at this time, we're going to close public comment. Are there any other council comments? Seeing none, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for joining us today at our October council meeting. We look forward to seeing everybody again, and we'll see you guys soon. Bye.
You too, bye.
You too, Shirley, thanks.
Thanks, Charlie.
Bye-bye. Bye, Karen.